All right, it being 6:30, I'm going to call tonight's meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Before we get to the administrative items, I think let's start with the continued public hearing for 688 Great Road. We did receive some additional materials which had been requested, thank you. I think before we kick in, kick off, I guess I was turn over the applicant just to briefly, you know, reset us and describe what was provided, and if there's any other additional information you want us to write, I'll be at the floor.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public, and attendees here tonight. For the record, I'm Bill Royer for the applicant this evening. So there's a couple of outstanding requests for information that we've provided. The first one was, I think the board had me-
Actually, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I realized that one of our members is not here. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just assumed that I didn't check. So, why don't we pause? If we can just pause the public hearing, I want to take my chair's prerogative to do so in just a couple of minutes. I will say as an aside, for whatever reason, doesn't appear. What we've typically done in these sorts of situations is to remind the applicant that you'll need, typically you need four out of five votes. There are four voting individuals here tonight. As a result, we typically provide the applicant the choice of either proceeding with the four that are here and hoping that they get a unanimous vote, or rescheduling and waiting for someone else. So that's usually the applicant's call. If it makes a difference, I've never had anyone say, "I'll wait." It's like, that's your guys' call. So why don't we just give it a couple of minutes to see if Ruth is able to appear? That's okay?
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you, I apologize for that little hiccup. I guess while we wait for a few minutes, we can just quickly go into the administrative items, if you guys online. We've got a couple sets of minutes. So why don't we take October 7th? There's a red line version for you. And I think these are your red lines, right?
Yeah, they're okay, straightforward.
Yep, all right. Any edits on, well, you know what, we'll just give everyone, there's only three pages. I'll give people a chance to take a look and if you have any edits on them, yeah. Hey, man.
Hi.
There you go. We're just going through the minutes right now.
Oh.
And so Ruth isn't here, so we're starting the 688 Great Road hearing. You're welcome to on the minutes, yeah, you just might have to like jump off back and forth sometimes, okay? Any gross edits, comments, concerns with the minutes of October 7th?
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of October 7th.
Sorry. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, accept the minutes as amended of October 7th?
I'm on, you guys.
Excellent, Ruth.
Sorry, I was sitting in the waiting room.
No, 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 that's okay. Sorry. It makes you feel better, Ruth, there was a moment today where I'd forgotten that we were starting at 6:30 instead of 7, so don't worry about it.
Okay, okay. It was all my bad idea, so you can blame the whole thing on me.
I'm going to, absolutely. So, all right, so with that, let's pause the administrative items for a moment and go back to the applicant and reopen the public hearing for 688 Great Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the board, viewing audience and attendees tonight. For the record, I'm Bill Royer here for the applicant. We're here to fill in a couple of requests for information from last time we met, a week ago. The first one being regarding the height of the fixtures, which the board determined was in their jurisdiction and that they wanted to remove information on that topic. So what we did is we updated the application as requested, submitted it, as well as the plan L101, which you had seen before, and the other dimensional information on it, but not the fixture heights for all 14 poles, so. That's what you see on the board. And John had also submitted a hard copy, so that should be in front of you. That's one. The second one was-
I can, before that, can you just, where's the tallest pole, is it the B2?
Correct, so I'll go through real quickly the heights of the poles. So on the far east, all of these are 90-foot poles. The two right behind the lower backside area are 70. The next two over are 90. The tallest one is this 100-foot B2. The two poles behind this baseball field are 80 and 80. And then these are also 80 over here and 90 foot in these upper areas.
Okay, great. Sorry, I was trying to do this on my computer, I'm like, for life, man, like, where is B2? I could not, so I couldn't find it, so.
No worries. So any other questions on that revised plan, of course, we're here to, we'll answer those for you. The other item was some more specific information on the actual fixtures on each pole. And John's provided that in sort of graphic form here on a figure with some photographs. And if there are any questions about that, or John, make a couple of seconds to just summarize that for everyone.
Again, for the record, John is in charge of Mac Tivitas, Registered Light Speed Architect. So the calculation grid summary, that was on a previous plan, so this information was previously submitted. The new information up here for the pole fixture summary, this provides again the heights of the light poles, the number of the light fixtures on each individual pole. So briefly, just to note, you know, in typical laying applications, let's say for a parking lot, you get 10 light fixtures and they're laid out appropriately to light that space. For the athletic fields specifically, our design, each of those poles are designed individually by themselves to light the entire facility. So where one light fixture, for instance, A1 and 2, there's four light fixtures on that. When you look at the B2 pole, the 100 footer, there's about 15 light fixtures. So again, those are designed where, you know, from a height standpoint, from how much light output is required, that's why each of those are individually designed, but as a whole, they're developed to light the entire facility. And then there was a question about lumens, so there's additional lumens information for the fixture types as well.
And the third piece was, yeah, in response to some of the questions of members and more sort of general questions about the fixtures and cutoffs and things like that, to make sure that, you know, the fields are being lit and any bleed is going to be minimized. So there was a fixture specification sheet was provided, several pages, so. I think everyone would have a copy of that at this point. And John can speak to that if necessary, but we thought that was a pretty comprehensive response to that and probably answered most questions, if not all, on that topic. That was really all we had, so. Again, we're here, any other further questions, comments, discussion, or happy participants?
I'll open it to the members, if there was any other comments, I know her and you, I think submitted some information to my mind about your concept. I will say, if you were looking at the NCAA regs, I was desperately trying to find, to see if the MIAA had them and any sort of lighting standards, I couldn't actually find any. But that's just its interscholastic athletic association. But I did see, I stumbled upon like North Carolina's, apparently there's very easy to find their lighting standards and they match actually what the NCAA has.
I mean, lumens on the field?
Yeah.
Yeah, also the NCAA has exactly the same. I found that one, the other one, no one has it, because it costs money for one thing.
Yeah, right, the engineering.
Yeah, but the NCAA has exactly the same standards, so.
Any other questions, comments, concerns about either the additional information or any of the items that we discussed at the last meeting? Anything for staff? Take a motion at this point.
Maybe we'll be up here closely here.
Excuse me, do, audience can-
Where I take a bullet, come on. We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion or a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Here it is. So the hearing closed, we can no longer take information from the applicant or from the public. We do have a draft decision. Any discussion before we go into that, or should we just dive on it?
Good. I would like to put a condition in there. So after you get there, I like to put a condition in our decision there. After everything's installed, the lights are on, the public will, the various houses around there, developments and everything, they'll have a chance, if they have a real problem with what they, the lighting, what they see is bothering them or something, I think they should let the building commissioner decide if anything has to be done, like additional shielding or whatever, protect them.
Are you talking about the properties that are there currently, or the ones that may come up in the future?
The current ones.
Okay.
So one of the applicants on Maplewood, whatever, sees it and, you know, pictures he shows, there shouldn't be a problem.
Right.
But just-
How would that work? I'm just, I'm just, I'm going through the, like, if we wanted to put something like that in there, how, for example, would be phrased and how would it be workable? I mean, like, today, if someone has a problem with a lighting situation of someone down the street or whatever, I don't know what you would do, I mean.
Building commissioner. But the other thing is, the lighting is not going to be in the wintertime, that's when you need it the most, when the trees are bare, but it's, they say they're not going to do any use of the field in the wintertime, it's frozen, for one thing, after probably December.
Yeah.
So in between, like right now, just to change a daylight savings time, that things would start becoming a problem.
So, Ray, what would be different than what's already stated in the bylaws that does attempt to describe what you're talking about?
It would just put the app on a notice that there is, if, you know, we want their cooperation, if there is something that the building commissioner feels needs to be addressed.
They're obligated to that regardless, if they're going to abide by the rules, I mean, there's a discrepancy somewhere, they're going to have to do that.
I'm just going to be the same place you are.
Yeah, yeah, I like, I mean, I see where you're going in terms of like the intent, and I think, I mean, you know, the hope would be that, you know, if for some reason there's been a miscalculation or whatever it is, you know, obviously the applicant would, you know, seek to remedy that, you know, as a-
No, I don't think they're going to have a problem, but that's-
No, no, I, you know, but you never know, I mean, you're right.
The public out there and they, maybe a problem for them.
Yeah, I'm trying, I mean, how does it probably even go down, if someone says it's a nuisance? Is that essentially the argument?
I think it would be more kind of what they're presenting, if I'm hearing right, you're saying, like, if what they're presenting is a-
It's mainly from direct light.
Which there shouldn't be any.
There shouldn't be any.
So then is the zoning enforcement officer effectively enforcing the zoning that we've put in place, which he would have the right to do anyway?
Correct, yes. I definitely think if there's a direct light, someone's going to be complaining. I don't know that we put it in here and what we do is open it up for everyone who's unhappy with the fact that the school's there to complain, even though there's no issue with the lights. Where, you know, the lighting people know that they're, you know, that they have a right to go to, to the building inspector to ask for review. I mean, that's one thing, I mean, I think that being in our minutes is more important than being in the special permit.
Yeah.
Okay. Give me one technical thing.
This was discussed in a lot of detail in other public hearings that we've had, not for this application itself, but the board has always said, if there's an issue, they go to the building commissioner, and we shouldn't put it in the special permit or the variance, because we're just asking for litigation.
Right, okay.
And I don't think the town would be in support of that.
Go ahead, sir.
I don't have a, okay. I just brought it up.
No, 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 I get, I get the intent and I like it, I'm just trying, it was more the workability of it and how to phrase it and if I couldn't get past that point, you know?
Because that's a major issue that we have, the lighting.
Yeah, and, yeah, but ultimately, I mean, there's a decision, there are bylaws. The building commissioner, if there's a problem, the building commissioner is the one who's going to be responsible for, frankly, sorting out.
And effectively, as I understand it, the decision is creating a set of exceptions that he's been enforcing as if they're a new zoning bylaw, right?
Essentially, yes, yeah.
Sure. So the decision has conditions and, like any decision, right? By any permitting authority. And if the building inspector doesn't think that the project is in compliance with the decision, then he or she can ask for proof of compliance. And we fully understand that, that's just, like you said, it's just how the statute and the bylaw work anyways, so.
All right, well, why don't we go to the draft decision? Any, any comments or edits? I'm saying pages one and two. Actually, on page one. Public hearing closed at the end of October 28th, huh? So that's everything for- All right, and on page three. It's a little bit worse. One small thing on number nine. You know, I'll get back to it, nevermind.
One quick question on the variance query. If earlier or somewhere here, I think that the board found that there is no direct light storage. So is this actually necessary?
Where?
I tried to write somewhere else on this, saying basically the board finds that there's no direct light, it's ambient light.
So I wrote that there's, under the bylaw definition, there's light spillage, or there's direct light spillage, but the board finds that the direct light that's actually spilling is not pointed at the field. It's, it's actually kind of just a slight ambient light that's like-
Right, but it's still considered direct light for the purposes of, okay.
For the purpose of the bylaw.
Okay.
It's considered direct, but it's not directly pointed at any other light, it's going to pass the fields.
Anything else on page three? Page four? Sorry, I'm tech confused. All right, 17.
Are you, either board?
Thanks. Are you finding that the site has soil shapes that are in soil shape and geography? Or is it the structures on the site that make it?
Right, you're asking us to pick one, you're not, you're not suggesting that it's drafted as, as the same as you defined it was or the other.
It could be both, but just, I could make it so that it's both, but if you want, if it's very strong, that's the shape, topography soil, then you could have that as a reason for granting it variance.
I think, I think it's both in many ways. It says the shape of the property, but at the same time, buildings are in the way, so they can't shift it the right way. If they shift it one way, there are left ends and the other there, you know, they're knocking down the building, they need the right one.
Do we need to resolve three? So, question, the shape and type of-
It's the way it's written in the bylaws or-
Sure, I know, I'm just wondering if the purpose of the decision, do you mean to pick one or the other?
Um.
We've done this a lot.
It, yeah, it's having more, it's, that's what, well, the applicant argued, all of them.
Understood.
So if the board finds that all of them apply, then that would add some benefit to the permit. If there's two out of the three.
Right.
So be it, but we want it. To be.
Okay. Anything else wrong with that, 17?
Well, I think if you could really write it in such a way that it does include structure, it would be appropriate. Because it is a major consideration.
I think instead of or, I wouldn't write and, I would say like, and in the alternative, you know? I guess my point being is that it doesn't need to be both, you know, it's, you know, it's one, you know? Like, the reason I'm thinking is because, like, God forbid this became, you know, subject of further review, right? I want to be clear that, you know, we basically, we simply decided once, if you're not run out, the decision will survive, it's like, you know? Maybe I'm overthinking the writing of it. Maybe just write and separately, the board finds.
So I could have the first sentence be about the site soil condition sheet, the topography, blah, 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 not generally affecting the zoning district in which it is located, period. The board finds that the site has structures, especially affecting such like in structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district, which is like, you're good.
Yeah, just make it, yeah, okay. So the only thing I was going to ask was, in terms of the specific variances, this is a picky point, I guess, is that for the second and the fourth, so for the feet of the setback, the way this is written right now, one could interpret that as saying, we're giving them 165, variance of 65 feet across the board, which is technically not even what they're asking for, they're just asking for 65 feet on the max, with like, it's almost like breaking down by pole. Is that like, like the different variances?
So I wrote it so that the conditions would say would have to be in accordance with the plans and documents submitted.
Yep, yeah.
And those have the different heights and-
Yeah, as long as that's, that's made clear. Because from my perspective, not that the applicant's going to do this, but if they suddenly decide, like, you know, you know what, we want 100 feet across the board, you know, like, that's when I'd want, want it to come back.
So in this lighting-
Wait, sorry. Oh, I was just going to say, the way that I read it, because that, that was sort of the intent of getting that schedule, is that our approval is conditioned on compliance with that schedule in all regards.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess what you're saying is condition one sort of covers that.
Yes.
And this artifact that we received tonight, this is part of the record, so that's a reference point.
Yes, it is incorporated into.
Yeah.
Questioning the word essentially in the first condition.
That's the part that we use.
Is it, that's what we usually use? It gets slight flexibility, if it's off by six inches, it's not.
I think the difference is also, it's like, if it's a, you know, that way, like, non-material changes can be done without asking for a full load, you know? So I think it's, it's to capture that sort of piece of it.
Okay.
So, I mean, the way I would do it is if someone came and said, you know, if there's been, there's a change, if there was a material change, then we would say, you're not essentially in performance with it, because you're no longer at 100 feet, you're at 150. But if it's 100 feet point one, you know, okay, that's essentially- Any other further comments or edits, pages five and six? There is a, I want to hear a motion.
I will make a motion that we grant the variance for 688 Great Road, you spelled, with the appropriate edits that we've discussed here.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yeah. I need a second, I need a motion for the decision.
To approve the decision.
Oh, oh, oh. So I'm making a motion that we approve the decision to grant the variance.
As many.
As many.
Yeah, that's like, your motion, we have a second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, thank you, the applicant. All right, our next public hearing is not until 7:15, so if folks are okay with it, we'll go to some of our administrative items. I think you can rejoin us, thank you. All right, we have one more set of minutes to take a look at, that would be the hearing on October 28th. We've got some red lines from Andy already, otherwise I'll take any comments or edits on page one. We've got some red lines from Andy already, uh, otherwise, I'll take a comments or edits on page one.
Actually, I have to recuse myself in these minutes.
Oh, you know, well.
From all of them?
Oh, you do, yeah, you do.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. Nobody needs to review this. Thank you. That heads up, trying to lock you up. Bottom paragraph, third sentence, the first variance he discussed was location of two of the light poles. And his work is in there, that would not meet the setback requirement, or which would not. That was line down. Also, I think in the last sentence, in the bottom page one, word variance should capitalize. Uh, and again, it's in page two. Top paragraph, page two, period missing. Page three, three quarters of the way down, Richard Perrenfall, his comment. And this is sent, I think, I have to say it, it's not set precedent. This is my comment. Can you say? Can you have to say, say that it's not set precedent, because.
What, what we said was a case by case.
Yeah, I tried, I, I wanted, wanted something to basically say that, I believe what I said was like, no app, no decision ever sets a precedent. You know? Cause when I, when I read this, it makes it sound like this instance doesn't set precedent, well, I think, you know, I'm just gonna make that clear, so. Say that it's not set precedent, because every application is always assessed. I don't know, something like that. All right, any comments, page four?
When it references. Yeah, I was gonna bring up this. Lenny, that it wasn't from an address, but it's because it already has.
Oh, there's an editor page one. And I think actually I do have a for these addresses.
Oh, really?
I can, yeah, yeah, yeah. Forgot to look at her. Very profound, page one. You're the wrong date. Any other edits, comments, questions, concerns?
My comment is hilarious that we all missed that.
What'd you say?
It's hilarious that we all missed that.
It was a test.
I'm making a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of October twenty eighth as edited.
Do a motion, we have a second, any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes as amended?
Aye.
And the minutes therefore are accepted. All right, any member updates of a planning or a zoning need?
Michael's birthday.
Oh, it is? Oh, happy birthday! I would say you and Valerie also look good at the, I saw the stove case picture.
Yeah.
But I don't think you guys, were you guys in costume?
No. I noticed, we were one of two departments not in costume.
So, well, I'd like to make a motion that that be remedied next year. So, I will say that the police did a good job.
Police was bad, you couldn't get in.
I know, it was jammed. That's great.
Huge turnout.
Yeah, that's, that's really good. Well, thank you for spending your birthday with us, and Maria, thank you for spending your son's, son's birthday, so, you wasn't invited.
Hilarious, he didn't even mention it when I was.
Massive points, Maria.
That shouldn't have been in the minutes, by the way.
Planning related, there's no, you can receive any appeals to Stowe acres, uh, western Stowe acres, the forty eight.
Oh, great. Okay, we feel for you as, as well. Excellent.
Subject to.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Because isn't the independence? The fact that we approved it? I don't remember seeing it.
I don't think it was.
We may have.
It's been a while now, hasn't it?
I haven't been lighting too closely.
I, I don't, I don't remember seeing that, there, there were some prior articles about it, like the process, but I don't remember them having an article at the end saying that it was.
That's a big decision that missed.
If they're listening in tonight. So, all right, we've got, we've got a couple minutes until our next hearing at seven fifteen, sixty pine point road. Actually, if I could, before we do that, uh, just to maintain a, um, pattern, could, um, is there a fully pledged voting member who's willing to step down on this one?
Me.
As a member?
Me.
Ruth, thank you.
You're too quick, Ruth.
Well, everyone can take a, everyone can take a turn, so, I guess except for me, um, so.
All right, so I'm going away, you guys.
Well. Actually. She's on fifty six, isn't she?
No, Lenny.
I'm not, am I in forty, am I in fifty six? I thought I wasn't.
No, I'm on fifty six.
Oh, great, all right, in that case, Ruth, if you wanna jet, you can jet.
Okay, bye you guys, thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, let me get you back to back.
We had a visit at the start of the meeting that was, came because, you know, to see how the town works and everything, and possibly be on, many, he was gone, so we scared him away.
Somebody was there?
Someone was here, yeah, I talked to him, we got one up the elevator with him.
Actually, you're the one scared, that might be so. He doesn't wanna deal with old people. Hey, speak yourself.
Yeah, right, yeah.
All right, it being seven fifteen, uh, I'll call to order the next public hearing for application for a special permit at sixty pine point road. I'll entertain a motion to the way of notice, to reading of the, reading of the notice, excuse me.
I'll make that motion.
So, oh, actually, just to form, uh, sorry, formalize, so, uh, member Ruth, sit up? I can never pronounce. So, okay, um, is not gonna be participating, so I'm gonna appoint associate member Lenny Goldber to be a voting, uh, member, uh, for this application.
So I'll make the motion if we wait to read the.
Thank you. Second, second, we have a motion with a second. Uh, any discussion, hearing done, all in favor? All right. All right, with that, uh, is the applicant here? Excellent, hi, hi. So, uh, we'll begin the hearing, I'll provide the applicant with the opportunity to, um, discuss the application. I encourage members, uh, to ask questions, uh, of the applicant, um, to the extent that there are any. After that, uh, we will open it up for public comment, uh, we'll begin with folks in the room afterwards, I'll look to Zoom, um, to make sense that anyone, uh, is there. As a reminder to anyone, uh, members of the public, I'm gonna repeat myself later, um, but I'll say it first now, if you do have a comment, uh, please keep it short and concise. Uh, so that everyone has an opportunity to provide comments, um, please also state your name and your address, and as a reminder, um, any public comments are to be directed to the board. Uh, the applicant is welcome to respond to a public comment, but there's absolutely no requirement, you can simply respectfully decline, if you so choose. That being said, the board may pull off the question and then ask you, ask it of you anyway, so, you know, it could go either way. At which point, uh, we'll certainly provide, uh, members of the board and town staff, not asking any other questions or comments, um, and then we will proceed, uh, from there. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Okay, thank you, um, I know exactly what to say, but I've been so, since two thousand eleven, and recently moved to sixty pine point in, beginning of August. Love the neighborhood, love, I was living on the lake. We did some renovations to the house to try to beautify the neighborhood, but it's hard to go outside, it's very paint, did some yard work. Uh, the only unfortunate part of where we live is we don't have a garage, I think in front of us are just ways, wanted it, just don't have access to garage. Don't want the lawnmowers and other things out, don't want to have anything, obstructing the view of the beautiful lake, and we wanted to do a check on the side of the road, and. Because of, you know, the size of the lots, I guess you need to have an application to, to approval to do that. I don't know if there's anything opticians want me to add to that.
Well, I guess one thing made clear is that, um, the shed's already there, and already built, okay, when did that occur?
I don't know exactly.
Right.
Bottom one. Okay, I could be wrong on that, but originally, you know, going through that, I had talked to our, our immediate neighbor and said that we were planning on putting a shed there. Said that it sounded a great idea, and, you know, didn't take much of it, and, you know, we got something that looked good, painted the same color as our house, try to, you know, beautify the neighborhood. Not leave lawnmowers, rakes and things like that aside, just because we don't have access to the garage.
It's on a brick, it's almost like a brick patio.
Right, you face it as the driveway, and then it's already, it was a perfect spot for where you have, drive through, there's a very, you know, very narrow part where my, the neighbor to my right is. To the left, there is two layers of, of layered brick, and it was just enough that, that, you know, and then it's, it's raised, so you have like a, a brick wall with bricks like this, and it's level, or.
So the, the brick patio, I, I call it a patio, because I don't know as well, describe it, uh, so that was pre, that was pre-existing, you didn't build it for the shed.
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, is one of the things I was kinda curious, it's like, why the shed was, why'd you pick that location?
It was level, had the bricks, and also has like a walk to the driveway, where if you wanted to, take a wheelbarrow or something like that, you could easily maneuver it there.
Just to be clear, there's no electrical, there's no plumbing, anything like that. Oh, one question, obviously, it's from, one of the issues, it's from Rob, just the proximity to the neighboring lot. Did you have any, I mean, is it, is it actually, I mean, it looks like it's really close to the line, I mean, that's, you pick about it, like, how do you know you're on the one side of the line, is there a marker there? I mean, I haven't, I haven't obviously been to your property, uh, but like, is there a marker there, is there a fence rock, something like?
There is that pre-built brick patio with a wall, and then you can see it, so it's clear that it's on the property, how far it goes on, I know that there is a flagpole beyond that wall. But it's clearly on my property where there's a wall.
Oh, you, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm, like I said, I haven't.
It's a small wall.
Oh, there's the wall, sorry, I was looking at the picture with the shed, and the shed, uh, blocks the wall, oh, there's that wall.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
So, presumably, that's all you know about.
Yes.
Other questions, comments this time, members? All right, we'll take a moment, all right, I will open it up for public comment, yes ma'am?
I'd like to speak.
Sure, yes, just say your name and your address.
Sure, my name, I'm coming up a little close because my voice is kind of not that great.
That's okay, whatever is best for you.
Do you want to pull up a chair, John?
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Now I can stand this.
Are you sure? Okay.
So, I know, your time is short, so. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, so, good evening, my name is Dr. Janet Stiles, I'm the owner of the property at fifty-eight Pine Point Road, which immediately abuts to the north of Mr. Sartre's property, my home is the one most directly affected by the accessory storage building on Mr. Sartre's land. My family has lived on Pine Point Road for hundred and four years, for three generations, the Stiles family has had a long-term interest and commitment to the area. San Susie Cottage, Ark cottage, is one of the few remaining named historic lakeside cottages from the nineteen twenties. I oppose Mr. Sartre's placement of a large accessory storage building, his building is located twenty-nine inches from my property border, and has a detrimental negative effect, negative impact on my property by destroying my view from my dining room. The structure blocks light and causes a claustrophobic atmosphere, which is unacceptable. The view of my home traveling south to north on Pine Point Road is lost. I'm going to reference Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, and the Town of Stowe zoning rules and regulations, and go through the criteria for a special permit, a special permit for sixty Pine Point Road should be denied because it does not meet the requirements for a special permit. The Mass General Laws, Section six, Stowe Boarding, Stowe Zoning Board of Appeals, Document Application Requirements, Procedure and Rules and Application Forms for Special Permit. And it also referred to the Town of Stowe Board of Appeals zoning bylaws regarding special permits and regulation three point nine regarding non-conforming uses and structures. And I listed these, you don't have to take notes in case you were thinking of it, I'll give you a copy of this. So, the petition before the board, Mr. Sartre has located his building on an unlawful building site, the petition for which was previously denied on July eleventh nineteen ninety-eight by the Stowe Boarding, Stowe, what did I say, Stowe Zoning Board. I have a copy of that, and of course, that's in your files, the building site was created unlawfully by the previous owner, Neil Phelan, who defied the board's decision, which denied site alteration. He had applied for a foundation preparation, site preparation, as well as a garage, both were denied. But, just after that denial, he went ahead when my parents were away, and, and did all the site preparation that had been denied, it's word for word, what is there now? Mr. Phelan cut into the natural hill connecting our properties, removed the earth, installed permanent hardscape, and made our land dependent on his artificial retaining wall. The current petitioner, Sartre, was fully informed of the zoning restriction and the history of the site before he purchased the property on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. The listing realtor, Anne Boucher, was also fully informed of the denial of permitting for construction on this exact part of the sixty Pine Point property. By defying this restriction, Mr. Sartre now utilizes the previous violation, that's what you were asking about, why is this flat? It's flat because it was done illegally. Number two, Mr. Sartre intentionally and continually disregarded the permitting process. The building was installed during the week of September fourteenth through twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, without a permit. September twenty-third, the Stowe Building Inspector informed Mr. Sartre that a permit was needed, required. Followed requests to file were ignored, Mr. Sartre continued to defy the notice by subsequently painting and using the building. Number three, incomplete permit application, again, refer to these same Stowe documents and the House General Laws that I referred to before. From the town document, it is each applicant's responsibility to prepare an application according to the rules and regulations for special permits as adopted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, an application lacking any required information may not be accepted, or it may be cause for denial of said application. He did the following, neglect to Section two point four point three, other permits and variances. The applicant is required to include all lists and copies of all previously issued permit decisions. Mr. Sartre disregarded this requirement, and had he followed the correct procedure, would have again discovered the previous site denial. B, I have to say, there is no justification or evidence to support his request for a special permit in his application. And number C, there's failure to address impact on abutters. Continuing, number four, in order to be entitled to a special permit, a petitioner must prove that the proposed use and development will not be detrimental to abutting properties. This determination shall include the resulting impacts to views and vistas from abutting properties in public and private ways. Mr. Sartre's building is detrimental and injurious to my property by its location blocking my view, and instead replacing the Pine Point Road vista with the wall of his storage building. I have photos and surveys I can show you afterwards. Therefore, Mr. Sartre is unable to satisfy this statutory requirement for the granting of special permit. Number five, the granting of a special permit by law requires that Mr. Sartre does not derogate from the general intent of the zoning bylaws. In regard to non-conforming uses and structures, the guideline is expressed in Section three point nine, six point two, Sections one to three. Number one, the Board of Appeals shall encourage extensions, alterations, or changes to non-conforming structures and uses toward greater, if not complete, conforming, the purpose of the zoning bylaw, and to reduce the degree of non-conformity. The Board shall not encourage the expansion of a non-conforming structure or use as measured by the amount of floor space or land used. Used, and number three, the Board shall prohibit the expansion of non-conforming structures and uses unless there will be no demonstrable adverse impacts on abutting properties. Conclusion, Mr. Sartre is unable to satisfy each of these statutory and regulatory requirements for the grant of special permit. The Board cannot grant a special permit unless each of the statutory and regulatory requirements are satisfied. Mr. Sartre's permit must therefore be denied. It also, by the way, a variance, in fact, actually, I think, would be more appropriate, but we're asking for a spare, special permit, but a variance would not pass muster either due to detriment to the public good, the abutter, and failure to demonstrate hardship. And specifically, a hardship was, which is self-imposed. Mr. Sartre purchased knowingly a four thousand one hundred fifty-three square foot home on a point one-two acre lot, which equals five thousand two hundred twenty-seven feet. This gives the far, floor area ratio, which is very inflated. The pro, the house is clearly grossly oversized for a small lot, it is quadruple the size of the previous home in Pine Point Road. The property has extensive basement storage area, in a total basement area of eight hundred thirty-two square feet. In fact, it was important to note, the lower level was prominently featured by the listing realtor in the MLS report as having, quote, tons of storage, end quote. There is also an extensive deck area of seven hundred seventy-three square feet, which could and did previously accommodate storage structures. Mr. Sartre has now furnished the deck with a full living room, set of furniture, and a fire pit, but even so, there is still room for storage shedding. So, Mr. Sartre, it's important, has plenty of options. He could put this also in front of an area on the south front of his house, and I'll show you on the survey in just a moment. He cannot demonstrate hardship financially, he just completed, what he described kind of glibly, was a three-month, seven AM to nine PM, every single day, project of interior and exterior home renovation, employing two to eight workers daily, non-stop, since the week he moved in and continuing well into October. The cost of such a project can be only imagined by the average person. There's no financial hardship, there's no detrimental good, there is detriment to the public good, and honestly, I should not pay the penalty for Mr. Sartre's desires for more storage. If, if I may come up and show you some, conclude and show you some photos and a survey.
Are those ones that we can keep?
Some of them, yeah.
Okay, because I was going to say, if you just want to give it to him, we can just pass him out.
Well, I want to show you a few things if I could.
Okay, we can, I'm not trying to rush you, but.
You got, it's. You have a lot of time.
That's okay.
So. This is, this is what I look at, okay? Instead of looking at, you know, the kids riding their bikes, or the little country lane, this is my view. So, I'm sorry. And this, you can keep these, this is why I've given up my view, this is what's inside the shed, this is the shed, so these are the things, eighty square feet, okay?
Do I have property and pictures?
No, I took it, excuse me. Leave that if you don't want that shown, but, I think, sorry, sorry, it's understandably upsetting. These are pictures of, it's a little outside of it, but just to give you an idea of what I went through this summer, this is, this is every day, it's different rubbish, there is no mitigation, and for some reason, inexplicably, they seem to want to bring it right up to my side, it just, I have pictures that show that, but just to wrap up quickly, this shows you the, some of my, I don't have a few, I only have a few, but you can have these. Some of these, you can see the extensive depth, even, there were, you know, there's all kinds of storage options, little closets and, and containers. They were used by the other owner, this, and this is inside, this is from the realtor, this is public information, so I did not go in this house. But this, you can see, and this is eight hundred square feet, this is only a part of it. Now, the previous owner, Mr. Phelan, elected to convert this basement partially into an accessory apartment, and but that's his choice, and that's the choice Mr. Sartre made when he purchased the property, and there's, there's no law that says you have everything that you want can be built on your property if you go to interfere with the enjoyment of a dangerous property. This is more, this is the accessory apartment, just some of this, and the, the idea here, as you can see, this is the whole basement area that could be used. And you can see how this looks right out on the lake, okay, you get the picture, all right, enough of that. So, the last thing is on the surveys. I'll just start over here. This, this is actually not a van survey, this is not pretty septic, but it shows you the things I need to show you, and you can see the this is, sorry, I have to look it upside down myself, okay, this is our home, my home, and this is, this is where Phelan dug out, he was going to put his garage there, so he dug that out, that's the patio, that's what he refers to as the patio. The, the shed came in the week I was out of town, it's, it was just put down there, it's one of these prefab things. So, they brought it in truck, and I propose that we can move it out on the truck, he put it right there, this is my dining room, you see the view there. His lot has leaching fields up here, sorry.
You can get a decent scan of that.
Yeah, I can leave it to scan and pick it up later. Leaching fields here, so obviously, we can't build anything there, this is a septic tank here, immediately adjacent to the patio. I'm not going to get into any septic issues tonight because that's a whole other board, and I, I have enough, I think, that he failed both the criteria for the special permit and for a variance, even though we're not asking for variance. So, this, this area, this is open, there's nothing going on here, except, you know what, it blocked his window, okay? But he chose to block mine, here's his, under this ground, and here's his depth, so. In summary, to wrap it up, and thank you for your patience with me, he's got many options, I don't want to have any adversary relationships with my neighbors. I actually gave Mr. Sartre a very warm welcome, I was very pleased when they came to the neighborhood, I gave him some useful information about particular services. And so, I think that they have plenty of options, and I think that they, this particular shed, if it doesn't fit the here or on the deck, then, you know, perhaps they can sell it to charity or something, but that's not for me to say. Thank you very much, do you have any questions, Juan?
My only question is, is that, I believe I saw in some of the emails, you referenced that it's twenty-nine inches from the property line?
From my property line, yes.
How do you know that?
Yes, because that was a very good question, because we have serving markers, we have markers.
No, 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 but how did you measure it?
I measured it myself.
Okay, all right, I'm just asking because I presume that in order to measure it, you'd have to be on this property to measure it.
Not really, I did it, in, I, we have the markers, and then I just held the ruler in the air, and, you know, and then I would ask you, you know, that's a good point, because I couldn't go on this property, and so, so I stood on the part of my property, and I held a ruler, and it took me, you know, a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, JG two thirty-four Pine Point Road, to give you a little bit of a background, first of all, yes, I do sit on select order, but tonight I'm speaking as a private citizen.
Thank you.
Just for full disclosure, of course. I'm licensed as an unrestricted construction supervisor, and I've dealt with a number of different issues in town. This is definitely a non-conforming lot, which is why it's before you. I can also tell you that from the previous owner, there were many times that equipment was left out because they didn't have any place to store it, we're not talking a huge structure, this is six foot by eight foot, is what it is, it's a six foot by eight foot shed. And it was brought in to be able to safely store outdoor equipment that uses gas. You cannot store gasoline and gas-powered equipment on the side of where the deck is, there's no place to do that safely. on the side of where the deck is. There's no place to do that safely because of the volatile vapors that are caused by gas. And you also do not ever want to store gasoline near an open flame propane situation either. I do think it is a hardship situation for them because their lot is so small. And where it was placed, again, from my experience, it made the most sense. The other, it's way too close to the road. And the traffic we get in around, around that corner as well, quite frankly, could very easily cause problems for traffic to pass each other because that area is extremely tight, so.
This is where it is now, or where?
No.
Okay.
Where she was thinking. It, again, it wouldn't pass muster even with your board as well. So I just want to thank you for my comments, and I would ask that this be granted for the applicant.
JT, question. If it's, if it is twenty-nine inches from the property, and you have gas equipment, would that be, would that be?
No, because it's much further away from her house. Her house is set back much closer to the water. There's at least thirty to forty feet. If you store a gas-powered lawnmower in the area that she's suggesting where the deck is, that would be within thirty-six inches of their own property. Again, not a good situation. So.
We said property, right?
I'm sorry.
When you said property, you mean thirty-six inches of their house?
Yeah. Yes, of the structure itself that they live.
So the twenty-nine inches then is, the shed is between twenty-nine inches from the property, not from property line, not from your house?
No, it is not.
It's.
Any other comments from members of the board in the room? Anybody on? Any members of the board that are coming in Zoom that would like to make a comment? So we can virtually raise your hand. Before I bring it back to members of the board, any follow-up comments from the applicant or?
I don't know. It was very long. I'm supposed to address the, because there are a lot of things in there.
As I mentioned, public comments are directed at the board, so it's the applicant's discretion if he wants to respond to some, all, none of the comments that have been made so far, so I'll leave that to your discretion.
We did renovate our house, and, you know, I think we have the right to do that, and we did it on our property. And not being glib with, when I, when I did that, I wasn't trying to be deceitful and try to do it while she's, you know, away, or I didn't know she was away, and it was something that was constructed there, it was small. And the view that we're talking about, I didn't want to near the laundry room if I could, because it's a very, that's the beauty of quiet people on the lake. And I don't want it close to a road where we can shut you in traffic. And it's on the side of a road where the view that I believe that she's talking about is my driveway where my truck is. So I don't think, that's, you know, another part of it, you know, that's the one place I could put it.
All right, I'll turn, turn it back over to members of the board for questions or comments or discussion.
You know, from reading the documents and the situation, maybe it would be good would be to have a site visit. So we could see, you know, the shed is already there, so we could see, you know, what, what the situation is, as it exists. And then just get a view of the whole property situation. The applicant seems to feel that that seems to be the best and maybe the only location. The others seem to think that there's an alternative. And, 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 you know, there's a question here, is there, is this construction in any way creating any kind of nuisance situation where it's blocking any light? I, I don't know, when I've seen it. And I think getting a, you know, a site visit would, you know, address that, that kind of issue. Thoughts? Or other thoughts?
How do we define detrimental? I mean, you know, that, that's, I think, where it might come down to is, is this detrimental to the other?
So, see, I see this, the question is, is it creating a nuisance which gets out of the hole? Gets out a whole issue, whether it's even a detriment or non-detriment. If there's a nuisance issue, that takes precedence over anything. But if it's not, then it's true, we get back to other issues, but, you know, the issue that the, a butter is raised, see, you know, from a site visit, whether that, that does in fact create any kind of, any kind of nuisance situation.
An interesting question, the detrimental question is also, like, yes, detrimental to a property, the neighborhood, the community. And here, the real question is, is one property.
Right.
You know, and so, you know, you weigh that, you know, in as well. I'm not saying one or the other. You know, that sort of begs the question, you know, as well. I guess one question I have, yeah, I can just sort of ask directly, which is, why did you end up building the shed without asking for a permit first?
Ignorance is no, you know, not abiding by it. I, I spoke to Janet when you were doing it. My wife did as well. And like, oh, we're, we're thinking about doing it also. That's a great idea, is what we said, what she told us. Yep, so that, that was what was told, and the most person, and as Wood said, and, and honestly, I didn't think it was that. I, I did not know, and when I did know, I went down and I did all the application and everything that Janet had mentioned in her her dialogue there was that I would be aware of all the things that Neil did before me that were wrong. I didn't hear any of that. I didn't, you know, I bought the house as it is, and I didn't know all of the things that were, you know, were said earlier, and even when I did the application, tried, I want to do the things the right way. I'm, I'm an advocate of doing it the right way. And I thought it wasn't that big of a deal because it was a small shed for a few items that are gas. I, I wouldn't block the view in the road, it wouldn't block the view of the beautiful lake, and in, all it is is next to my driveway.
Did it attach to the patio in any way?
No, they, they put down, I think it's like a, what do you call it? A skid, and then they kind of built on that, but it was one day. And, and then afterwards, we, when we were painting the outside of the house, we, we wanted to have the same colors as that.
Other thoughts, comments, questions from the board? That's what I said, isn't it? Always worth it to drive by the property. I drove by today and appear to be, fits his house very well, paint job and everything, and fits right in. And I didn't see you really were to block, you know, yeah, she has a different thing to look at. If you want to watch Pine Point Road, the traffic on Pine Point Road, which is it may block some of her view, but not all of it for the road. I'm sorry.
Man.
No.
Without the, I don't feel like there's a site plan that necessarily places the sheds where it is, so. In that sense, it makes sense, but, because I didn't drive by ahead of time. So, yeah, but that, that'd be one.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I saw when I drove by was, you know, perhaps it could have gone further back towards the lake, but not too much further, because it dropped off relatively quickly.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, when it's so late, it was so dark, I couldn't see beyond. And he's putting it on the patio, so.
Yeah, well, exactly. No, I understood that, so, but definitely taking more effort to put it further back.
I mean, you know, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
No. Can't hit much towards, they're all small lots down there, there's. It's pretty tight. I did drive by, tried to do the same one way or the other, but it's just, it's all close.
I mean, you know, if there's a desire from at least a few folks to do a quick site visit, I don't see concern with it. I mean, the reality is that the shed's there now. It's not holding up any construction. And so, you know, someone has any major concerns, we can do that way. What do you park your car now? So, any objection? I mean, people, it's, unlike we've certainly done site visit scenarios before where it's sort of, you know, you know, everyone goes, there's other instances, you know, where it's sort of at the, at the discretion of the members. And so, you know, if, if people are okay with it, you know, I certainly would be. Without any objection to sort of continuing the hearing and then providing folks the opportunity to, and if you want to take it, that's great. Everyone will be as educated as possible. So, does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're gonna continue the hearing in a moment, but obviously there's certain members that would like to do a site visit. And so typically, you'll work with town staff, Michael.
You're working vice from our property. I'll do whatever you want to do, but.
From a process perspective, typically we'd only have two of us go at a time. And so, I think what will happen is, two, you can work together on some dates and times that, that are appropriate, and then we'll just sort of sign up and then, and then go. And, and, yeah. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, in that case, I'll entertain a motion.
So do we have a date and time zone?
That's a very good point. What's our next, December?
Uh, no, we can't do it on the. December is the next regularly scheduled. I don't believe there's anything.
All right, that gives, I entertain a motion.
Send me a motion that we continue this hearing until December ninth at seven fifteen. Second.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of continuing the hearing until December ninth? All right. All right, thank you very much to everyone. And if there are any materials here that you need to take with you, if you can, if you want to also give the.
I think we got the ideas. I will just take this. Is this mine?
No, these are mine.
And there is no opportunity to respond to this.
Not at this time, but you're welcome to.
That's always good. Yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
One quick question. Is the, so the comments in writing are still open until you close the hearing, presumably next week. Okay, thanks. Have a good evening.
All right, that, moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is the continuing public hearing in for the application for special permit, fifty-six Harvard Road.
It was a girl. We, right after the meeting, we went right to the hospital. She had a baby early that morning. Yeah, but it's a beautiful healthy baby.
What's your name?
Jennifer Willow.
Was it?
Jennifer Willow.
All right, so I guess I believe everyone completed site visits. That was good. Hi, Willow. I think just to kick things off, I'll turn to the floor of the applicant. To the extent that there's anything additional that you want to add, I think, I did receive one, I haven't writing. Yep. Oh, sorry, sorry. But I'll, I'll give you after the floor, if there's anything additional that you want to provide at this point, if you don't, that's unfortunate, but I figured I'd give you the opportunity.
I think we've, we've talked about our length. I haven't read any of the stuff there.
All right, well, in that case, I'll, I'll give you the opportunity to read that, if you want, I'll give you a chance to respond later if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think relevant wise, probably we don't.
Any members, any questions for the applicant, the members of the board, or town staff at this point? Site plan, we've been asking for a site plan, we do not have one. Controlling the site, showing the buildings, new driveway.
I, I gave the surveyor's thing, that's all I, I have. It's just that there's been no, any records that you guys have are going to be, there's no new, like, existing like.
You're gonna be parking.
Yes, yes, there's no, like, there's no, like, new existing things. So like, you guys have on record, like, the like, the dimensions of everything, and I'm not sure.
Well, what we wanted was a site plan, but we didn't have it going on.
To the best of my knowledge, I, I gave, I drew everything up with like the dimensions. I, I sent this, sir, I, I got a survey done, and I, I sent you guys.
We didn't get that, so I think that's the missing.
I, I gave it before the last meeting.
Because somehow.
I haven't gotten anything from, that was stamped by a surveyor. I got the parking plan that you drew.
Yeah. So I think that's the missing piece of the survey.
I mean, I sent it with all the other stuff, so like, I mean, it's possible it could have gotten lost in some of the shuffle. I could, I could take a quick man, top of my head, I mean, I'd have to like explain enough, but it's, I did send it over with all the other stuff. I'm not sure. It's also the, hasn't changed from what you guys already have on record. So I'm not sure, like, I, I'm not sure, like, what new irrelevant information the site plan's gonna be. It's the same stuff on record that you guys already have. And again, I'm happy to, like, get, you know, I, I did try to hand it over, but it has all the, like, the dimensions of, like, everything already.
Surveys aren't usually kind of the regular on-record stuff. They're a little extra. So I think that was the, when you were saying that you had the survey done.
Yes.
So, resenting that.
Okay, anything else?
Just to refresh my memory, if nothing else, yeah, how many special events were you asking for?
I, I wasn't looking to have, I, I didn't think there was necessarily a need to have, like, a special limit on it, because like you said, it, it poses more problems than solutions in regards to, like, I don't have, like, a finite number of things, and what's to distinguish a personal event versus like a business event?
Well, I was thinking more the business events.
Yeah, 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 yeah. There's not like a specific number. In all honesty, ninety-nine percent of what we do is we just teach private dance lessons. You know, we're just, we're looking to, to just not have any of those, like, crazy restrictions, just as the how to kind of like move forward, but it's not like we have a plan where it's like, oh, we have this many events planned. We have no events currently planned.
If there were a special event, like, how many people envision being in a special event? Not, not the personal thing from that time.
Right, 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 of course. Well, I mean, you guys have all seen the barn. It's not particularly big. So I guess I would say an easy way would be, I wouldn't anticipate having more people than I'm allowed to have in that small space by whatever codes.
A plan for the septic system, that's what you're referring to.
I did also provide the septic.
As if the one of the septic systems are closest to a site plan we have. And as it's showing the details of the septic system, not so much the layout of the rest of the land. Doesn't have the paddock on it or anything like that. Where the weapons are.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point. Yeah. Hopefully the, that plan could show it if any of you guys have questions there on. But again, I'm not looking to, to change any of the exterior.
I know you're not, but you're going to put parking in there and where is the parking going to go? What lights going to go on? If you run an air conditioned place, where the air conditioner is going to go? We need to know all that.
Sure. Um, is there? I'm glad to answer any questions that haven't been answered in regards to, so of course I have an intention like, I have a pretty solid answer for anything. It just, I'm not sure what questions were that. I'm, I'm glad to answer any additional questions, of course.
The major thing is I think we need a site plan. Details of what's going, what's we have there and what you're proposing on the site.
I mean, I guess the question, I think, I don't mean to kick the can down the road here further, but I mean, there's two choices, I think. Yeah, I think two choices, but I'll reserve the right to add another choice. I think, do you know what I was? One is, is that frankly, we stop now and say we need a site plan and we'll deal with the rest of it later. Or we push it as far as we can and, you know, condition on the site plan later. I don't love the second.
We know about a lot of what he wants to do.
Oh, I know. I know. That's what I'm saying. I, you know, I'd rather wrap it up.
And he can, he can go to Frank to get an idea of what a site plan has to have on it. Or a surveyor will know what a site plan has to have on it.
I mean, I would take the, the second option, you know, proceed and obviously we need the site plan. You know, later on, at least we can, you know, accomplish the rest of this, I think, you know, from reading, you know, the proposed decision. You know, certain things I think we can decide.
As long as it's making it clear that we're not getting closer though, because it could be.
Very close.
Like in the sense that the site, but like you need the site plan to move forward. So really should, that's.
I definitely think that's some of the points that we need to define, do need a site plan for us to be comfortable about with those decisions. So moving forward without site plan, I think it's just, you know, no, not time well set.
Sir?
Yep. Site plan, I think would be appropriate.
All right. I mean, I think at this point, that's what we need. I mean, you can talk to, my recommendation would be to talk to town staff and just say, I need a site plan. What does it look like? Who I have to call? And obviously that's a town to do it, but like, is that.
So what?
And also because in terms of an application for a special permit is, you know, typically what we, what we have so that we can, you know, it's one thing, and this isn't, this is not meant as a criticism by any of you. But there's one thing to have someone say, this is what we're going to do and this is where it is, as opposed to an actual site plan that's been stamped. Because then that's part of the record and typically, you know, our decision, you know, indicates it needs to be conformity with the site plan. Not what representations were made during the course of the hearing, you know, which may or may not have been consistent, you know, during the various, during the various meetings. And so I think that's honestly all that we're sort of still missing with that, you know. I don't think there's anything else that we need, you know, to otherwise render a decision.
That's why the building inspector and building department is going to use to make sure you do what you say you're going to do.
So I do have a stamp plan of the whole building.
Not just the building, it's for the whole, your whole lot.
Okay. I guess my question for, for you guys is we have like, we have the architect plan. We have the deed. We have a general survey. We have the septic system thing here. So what information, like what new information does the, this, this site plan have that we don't?
What is a general survey? What do you mean?
So I, I got a survey done that was mainly for like the boundary of my property.
I think that's what's missing, because that would have a lot in it.
Marked up to show where you're going to put the parking, how lighting is going to go in, if any.
Okay.
All we have is words and individual pieces of paper. We need one place, a document that describes all that. You might want to go look at our decision to clarify a few things, but the site plan is what basically what we're going to be approving. That's what the building inspector is going to use to check that you've done what you said you're going to do.
Okay. It's still not.
It sounds like you have it. It's that survey that you're talking about.
Except the survey, that's a as is survey. What we need is what will it be survey? So you need to have a, a plan that shows where you're going to be putting the parking. You know, you know, maybe even to the point where these, these are the number of cars that are going to be in this area. You know, and, and just basically when you're, everything says down, what's your parking going to look like? And how are you going to be able to, to host these, your, your classes and your, your special events and activities? So that we looking at it, know what you think you're going to be doing. And we, from there, we can make a decision whether or not we agree with it. Or whether we have any concerns or questions for face and lap, but until we know, we get a plan from a, signed by a professional engineer saying, you know, they went out and they did all these measurements. This is what they found and this is how it's going, how it's going to work. We, you know, we're not comfortable in, in making a decision because we don't have all the information we need.
Maybe one example, for example, one example is there's a drawing, I think you did it, right? Of the parking spaces. You know, it might be completely accurate, but I don't know that. Because with all, you know, you're not a professional engineer or whatever. And so having that, then you can feel assured, yes, someone who's licensed and certified has actually determined that there are three, two spaces that are available based on, you know, engineering, you know, engineering of it. And in all honesty, it's not something that is unique for this particular application. It's something that we typically ask, you know, for all, for all special permits that, that come before us. And it's one of those where, you know, as, as has been said, if there's ever an issue and someone says, well, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. All they have to do is go, all right, well, let's look at the site plan. All right. Site plan said, you know, this is here. Now we're going to take a look at it. Oh, that's right. Because that certified engineer said there'd be thirty three spaces and they'd be right here and that way. And then we can, we can look at it, you know, even if your plan is, even if what you drew is exactly perfect. But I don't know that. You know what I mean? So.
It's largely what you're saying, like if you've got that survey, it's largely that with what you were hand drawing there, but done to scale. You know, make sure that fits all of what's the legal.
And this is on the survey that you guys have. And even if it's not the new survey, the, the previous survey that's in the public record, I believe, does have like this whole part, like nothing has changed since then.
So that's what we do. I don't know what that's.
Yeah.
I hope it doesn't need any professional signs.
Yeah.
Only was the septic plan.
Right.
That was submitted from the conservation commission. And then we have the architectural plans.
I definitely remember those. Yeah, those are, those are great. That's exactly what we need.
In a way, we don't care about the architectural plan.
Well, I mean, I, I, I know, I, I. That's right, you know.
It's the same idea. It's the barn on the lot.
But you know, you know, for one instance, you're parking, you're planning to use the paddock for park. In the winter time, I don't think that's going to work. You need about 10 places.
For what?
For, in the winter time, parking on the paddock is not going to work.
It's actually.
That's a lot of ice, huh?
It's a riding ring.
A riding ring. Okay.
Well, mine, cause I got, depending how they film it.
But anyway.
To be clear, we've done, we're doing a hundred percent of what we're like, or 99% of what we're going to be doing. We're already doing it. So we've already done it for a full year and like we've had no issues.
Yeah, but you're not, you don't have 20 people there and 10 cars.
True. But there will be the same amount of space in the winter. Yeah, I have.
I know I've written some memos and you, you pass them on to him?
I.
And other people have written some memos.
I'm not sure if you were, I was able to get.
Okay, but I think we all should be fast flowing what our, you know, our questions are and our comments about what we feel that we're comfortable with. And it needs to be put down in a document and you can have supporting documents to go with it. But we just site plan as it shows where everything is, where the parking is, where the lighting is, all the little details that you're going to have. And then there's other conditions of how many people are going to be in your most largest group would accommodate, et cetera. But you need to, the site plan is a starting point.
And what I just gave you.
Okay. So, and, and I think to be clear too, I thought right here is the one who stamps the site plan, it's an engineer. Who doesn't?
With a professional land surveyor or engineer.
You know, if you ask them, can you get a site plan? They'll know what you want. Like it's, you know, it's a technical term. It's, you know, even though, you know, we can say, oh, it's a plan of the site. That makes sense. No, no, there's like, it, it's very specific. So also if you use sort of the term of art, with one of those guys, I build out what it is and then you can tell them what you want. But I think that's the one piece of information we're sort of still, that's still outstanding that we need, I think, before we can sort of render a decision. Unless anyone else has any other thoughts.
Is there anything else you guys need?
I don't.
Besides.
No.
Site plan, any questions? And if I'm able to get this to you, do you need to wait until December again to like?
Yeah, we, yeah, we wouldn't be able to, I mean, well, let me add, there were two question there. So let's do one at a time. I don't need anything else, but I'll, I'll defer to my other board members to see if, anyway, if they do.
We've discussed a lot. I don't think we need anything else.
I mean, I think if he's just ready to discuss the materials that he's going to get from all everyone's comments.
Yep.
If, if he's ready to discuss that information and then, you know, I think that's fine. I think, I think everything's in writing now, what we need or what we have questions or we're concerned, so.
And then I just want to make clear on what they're saying, they, what's, what sounds like you already have, which is the existing survey of the site, exactly like it is. And then the proposed, what are the points?
Okay. Uh, in terms of, uh, waiting, we certainly can't render it. I mean, unless someone else is comfortable.
Yeah, it'll take your, whoever does it, you'll have to get a contract with them and it'll take some time. There's not going to turn around overnight and ask if he's a friend of yours or something. So trying to make December, I don't. We continue to December and then continue to the next month and month by month.
He's already got the survey.
Well, he might, but. To get into what the workload is and everything.
So as I said, we've got two choices. One is that we can, so we continue the hearing and wait for the site plan. And then once we get that, we can kind of move to conclusion. Or we can take time tonight to discuss some of the conditions that, that we've been talked about. And then continue the hearing anyways. I, I, I don't care one way or the other. I mean, I'm, I don't know. Going to my head, I'd probably just say option one, because we're going to have to deal with this in the future anyways. But if other people feel otherwise, I'm happy to, I don't know, if people have a strong.
I'm amenable either way. I, I mean, I just thought some of these issues, you know, we could deliberate on anyway. But I think the other board members have been more comfortable with the site plan for us. So I'm okay with that as well, either way.
Yeah. I said, yeah, we can have, we can discuss some of the points there. Don't need the site plan. But, but yeah, there's a lot of it that requires a site plan. It's not, you know, but yeah, I mean.
In that case, I'm sort of inclined to just, you know, rather than like split the baby, you know, let's just continue, get the site plan and then wrap it all up in one, in one, one time.
I think once we have the site plan, we can go through this relatively quickly be done.
Yeah.
As long as there's nothing, I don't have a problem with that. As long as, I would hate for one more small thing to come up.
No, I understand.
Like.
No, 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 no. That's, that's the, you're, you, you are absolutely entitled to say, what else? I want a complete list. And therefore, you know, I don't want, you know, it's death by a thousand cuts. And so I think that's why we're telling you, we need a site plan and that shouldn't be it. I don't believe there's any other information that, that we require at this time.
Okay.
Okay.
As far as like, you can ask me all the questions and.
I, I think, I think to be, I mean, unless anyone else feels differently, I think we've asked as many questions as we need. I think we've got all the information that we need from multiple sources, including, including ourselves as the applicant in terms of, you know, whatever the issues might be and things that we need to think about in terms of like lighting and hours, the number of people and all those sorts of things. So I, I think we have enough to, to deal with. There's anything else I need at this time. But I appreciate the questions. So, all right, with that, I'll entertain.
I'll make a motion that we continue this hearing until December 9th at 7:30. I'll second that. Very simple, but, oh, 7:45, they can tell us. We're at 7:15, right? Should be pretty quick, but whatever. If you think 7:45 is more appropriate, that's fine. Okay.
I'll second that.
Great. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? All right. All right. Hearing is continued until December the 9th at 7:45. Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I hope you get some sleep.
Thanks. We'll get this all wrapped up.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right. Our next agenda, item 815.
Just a courtesy question.
Certainly, so.
I don't want like my brokerage to hear my house, so it's been twenty, almost twenty one years. I was going to build the garage when I first bought the house. I designed the septic and all that around it. And I put a lot of money into kind of design strong that I don't like. And I wanted to not spend too much more money, which I knew for sure that I could go and get what the building inspector said. So I'm here mostly for courtesy, but I did have a site plan, a lot. With the setbacks, I have to do handicapped with everything and I can't use my current garage at all for the lifts. So I just wanted you to take a glance at it. He answered my questions in email stating that it was okay based on.
So I guess, I guess that's my question, which is, and I'm, I'm saying this with all due respect. The building commissioner said, you're okay to go. Why are you here?
It's more a worry because everything down there seems to be, you know, an issue with everyone around.
Right. But she said it's okay.
He, he said it was okay when I said it. So I basically, I'm just mentioning for courtesy.
Okay. I mean, the only reason, and, and I'm, I'm not trying to like push back because frankly, it's always nice when people come to us preemptively and going, before we do anything, you know, I, God, you know, trust me, it's better than that than coming to us after. But the only reason why I have a concern is that it's kind of akin to appealing, like, look, looking to the appellate court for a decision when the trial court's already been like, no, 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 you won. And it put.
You can tell me to go home.
So. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I mean.
It's just, it's an expensive proposition.
Oh, no, 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 no. I completely understand. And, and it's one of those that if, if the building commissioner had said, you know what? This is a close call or I don't know, or, or anything like that. If he wanted advice from us, that would be one thing. I am just loathe to ever have the board make an advisory opinion, which is essentially what it would be, on an issue that like where there is no issue. You know what I mean? I definitely get where you're coming from. You're going like, oh, but without a lot of money, you know, to do something.
It's confusing. The bylaws can be confusing.
Right, right. So I guess my suggestion is that, you know, if the building commissioner said it was okay, you know, on, obviously, we're just, we're just talking about this particular situation. Then, then I don't know if we've got anything to, to weigh in on. If for whatever reason that changes or goes south or Frank has a concern, come on back and, and we can talk about it. But until then, I think I, I, my recommendation is that we sort of just sort of defer, you know, until, until it becomes a question for us.
So can I ask him? She knows more about the bylaws than we do.
I know. It's on the original bylaw. That's why.
Good luck, everybody else. Just do it.
Just do it. No, I can't.
She's too physical.
Yeah.
She's in too physical.
That's not in my character anyway.
All right. I think with that, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we. Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-one.
Second. Motion at a second, and discussion, hearing done, all in favor, all right. Thank you.